Good evening. Welcome to the Herndon Town Council, January 28, 2020.
We'll call the meeting to order. First, would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the Vice Mayor, I'll be chairing the meeting as the mayor is absent this evening. So, the first thing we have are the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. Is there a motion to approve January 7th work session?
Second.
Okay. Is that Baker? I'm sorry. Councilmember DeCall, and seconded by Councilmember Friedrichs. Is there any discussion? Call the question. All four? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Six oh. Is there a motion to approve the January 14 public hearing minutes?
It's removed.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Delagula, second by Councilmember Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I abstain from the vote due to the fact I was at a cybersecurity conference in Orlando.
Thank you. Okay. Call the question. All four? Aye. Abstain, one. So, that's five zero one. So, tonight, we have some presentations. The first one is a certificate of recognition for Eric Fielding. And tonight, we're pleased to express our appreciation to Eric Fielding for his service as a member of the town's Architectural Review Heritage Preservation Board. And I will recognize the council members for comments.
Mr. Fielding, I just want to say thank you so much for your service. The jobs that you did on the ARB and HPRB, they're thankless jobs. And more importantly, they're jobs that deal with compliance. And people don't like those things. I know the, we always used to be afraid when I was in the securities field of our compliance officer, but they are the people who keep us from, number one, getting in trouble; and number two, making sure that the best possible outcomes happen for our clients. And the work that you did helped make the best possible outcomes for Herndon. And there's no way that we can thank you enough for everything that you've done. I'm grateful for your mentorship and your talking to me on occasion in regards to certain things. I just, thank you. There's no other way we can do that, but you've been great. Thank you.
Eric, I want to join my colleague in saying thank you very much. I know that it's a very difficult job being in the ARB, HPRB. And we've seen you up here a number of times, and I appreciate your calm input and your knowledge. And we're going to miss you a lot, but I see that you have a little kitty pie there that's going to keep you busy. So, thank you very much for your service.
Any others?
Thank you, Eric, for your service through HPRB to the town. Thank you. We really appreciate that.
Baker? Sure.
Eric, thank you for your many years of service to the town. You know, we're really, I feel lucky to have you both as a neighbor and a friend and a citizen of this town for all the service that you provide. So, even though you're stepping back from this, I know we'll continue to see you in so many ways and on the HOA board that you're still on, and just so many other ways that you've served the town. And really excited to, I'm happy to see Maria and Thomas here tonight, and the reason why, that, just the refocus of your life. So, I appreciate that. I'm really happy for you. So, thank you again for your service.
Eric, neighbor, resident, thank you for your time. And definitely, definitely enjoy the freedom of time and allocating it to what's paramount. So, thank you.
Yes, and I would like to say thank you, too. I was on the interview committee when you first moved to town and when you took your position in 2013. So, you've, 14? So, you've been on there for quite a while. So, thank you for all the many evenings that you've put into doing this. And I know you look forward to spending time with your new addition. I'd also like to recognize the Chair of the ARB, HPRB, Mr. Bob Walker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members. I do want to state my appreciation for Eric's diligence. He was one of the most diligent people I've ever spent around, and was always even keeled, and you could tell he had done his homework. I personally will miss him because I was able, I had to crib off of him. His staff reports and applications would be very neatly highlighted and marked. Mine had circles and notes that I could not read, so I would crib off of his at the work sessions. So, I thank you very much for your work on that and for your friendship. I value it.
Are there any other members of the ARB, HPRB that would like to speak? Okay. Are there any individuals or staff present that would like to speak?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and just the town manager. I did want to say, I am Chris Garcia. I'm the Community Design Planner, and I am the staff liaison for both the HPRB and ARB. And I did want to extend my thanks to Mr. Fielding for a wonderful relationship in those evenings we spent together talking about architecture. And I always appreciated not only challenging my ideas and my opinion sometimes, but also your inquisitiveness about architecture, which is obviously one of my passions. So, I do want to let the council know and those that are listening that you did a fine job in my short tenure here that I've been here. And you will be missed on this board, and I appreciate the time we were able to spend together. So, and enjoy the evenings away and not having to listen to me talk about architecture. So, thank you very much, and best of luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
And now, Eric, would you care to say a few words? You don't have to, but we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Well, first, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Acting Mayor Olum, and also extend my thanks to Mayor Lisa, who's absent, and the Town Council for inviting me today here for this ceremony. And I'd also like to thank my colleagues who just came up to the podium and made those remarks. So, I think that's very kind, and I really appreciate that. And I would like to also recognize my wife, Maria, and our infant son, Thomas, who've joined me here today. Let me say a few words. I'd like to start by publicly saying what a privilege it's been to serve on the HPRB and ARB for the past five and a half years. And I have found the work to be very rewarding, and it's very, I feel very fortunate to be supported by such an outstanding staff during that time. And I'd especially like to note the support from Ray, Bryce, and Chris. So, they've been instrumental in helping me be a part of the boards. In addition, I'd also like to mention that I've learned a lot from my outstanding colleagues, and it's been a pleasure working with all of them while we discuss countless projects. I feel very proud being part of a team that has worked hard to benefit the community. And I especially appreciate the outstanding leadership of Mr. Walker, the Chairman of both of the boards. So, that's been instrumental, and I consider him to be a mentor. Overall, I've seen tremendous progress in the restoration and development of our downtown from the HPRB projects, as well as from the rest of town, from our, in the metro corridor from the ARB projects. He's always upstaging me everywhere I go, so I'm used to that. And also, I should mention that clearly under the leadership of Mayor Lisa and you, Acting Mayor Sheila, the Town Council, Herndon has become a model community with a bright future. And I believe that Herndon has struck the correct balance of encouraging appropriate development, restoring historic properties, and at the same time, preserving its small-town character that residents have grown to love. And case in point is my wife, Maria, who has moved 6,000 miles from Brazil, and of course, now she's been a resident of Herndon with me for the past three-plus years. So, Herndon is a perfect place to live and raise a family, and that brings me to where we are today with this ceremony. Maria and I feel very good knowing that our son, Thomas, has the safety, the schools in the future, the parks and other activities that any young child needs to grow and flourish. And as I said last night in my note that I sent the email, I don't want to miss any opportunity to experience our son's development and milestones, which he seems to achieve daily. And frankly, being a first-time dad and as old as I am, you know, I feel that every single evening is priceless, and that's really influenced me. So, although I leave the two town boards with regret, I know the important work will continue in great hands. Maria, myself, and Thomas will continue to live in Herndon and enjoy the benefits that it offers families such as ours. And I'd like to conclude by quoting my wife, Maria, who has been my biggest fan on community television, maybe my only fan on community television. And she has learned the specific language that we use on the HPRB. So, to paraphrase Maria, using our HPRB language, "I move to approve the town of Herndon." Thank you.
So, if the council members, town attorney, town manager, staff, APRB, HPRB, would like to join us in front for a photo? Now, we have a proclamation to recognize African-American History Month, February 2020. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember DeCall to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing African-American History Month, February 2020. Throughout the month of February each year, events are planned nationwide to honor the history and impact of African-Americans. African-American History Month began with an initiated by writer and educator Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who recognized the need to raise awareness of African-Americans' contribution to civilization. The event was first celebrated in 1926 during the second week of February to include the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. Since 1976, every American president has proclaimed February as African-American History Month. Other countries such as Canada and the United Kingdom also observe month-long celebrations. As the Town of Herndon celebrates African-American History Month, we commemorate the sacrifices and contributions made by generations of African-Americans. And we recall the impact that African-Americans have made on American history in their struggle and perseverance for freedom and equality. Therefore, the Mayor and Town Council of Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 as African-American History Month in the Town of Herndon and call on all citizens to enhance their awareness of the cultural, scientific, political, and economic contributions of African-Americans throughout the American society, and to recognize the significance of these endeavors. Further, the Mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby remember and honor the courage, resilience, and fortitude of African-Americans. We acclaim the sacrifice, strength, accomplishments, and unyielding spirit of our nation's great civil rights leaders who fought for and protected equal rights, including Frederick Douglass, W.E.B. Du Bois, Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Fannie Lou Hamer, and we also honor those whose names we do not know. Further, the Mayor and Town Council of Town of Herndon hereby honor the innumerable contributions of African-Americans since our country's beginning, and we recommit to continue teaching, I mean, reaching for a day when no person is judged by anything but the content of their character. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the council? Mr. DeCall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This proclamation is great, and this really represents and, you know, shows who Herndon is and what our character is. You know, the contribution made by African-Americans to this great land is unparalleled. And, you know, what I say, my words may not be enough to describe the contribution they have made, and I cannot say any better than what has been written here. It's been written here, and, you know, we are here to practice what we preach, and we truly, truly judge people by the content of their character. And we really, really appreciate the African-American community, their contribution to the town, not just to the town, to the entire country. Thank you.
Any other comments? DeCall, say something.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with my colleague, Councilmember DeCall. I also want to add that as we look around the town, we see roughly a representation of groups. And it's my hope, and I think it's the hope of this council, that we have representation in government from all groups, all different segments. I think that's where we truly get true representative government. One of the things we've done and we really need help with as we do outreach for some of these boards, committees, and membership, is to really drill down and look for people that represent the different worldviews that are in our town. So, I want to use this as an opportunity to have another call for more resumes to the talent bank and make sure we get that in there, because we really do want to have representation within town government. So, thank you.
Member Baker?
Thank you. Always appreciate that we acknowledge our fellow citizens, our fellow neighbors, our fellow friends, both Herndon and the greater community, our African-Americans who have contributed so much, both to Herndon and at large. I, as I've mentioned several times, I'm a member of a board called Service Never Sleeps. Our focus is on social justice, particularly racial equity. And so, this is, we essentially call it Love in Action, that we train and have created allyship workshops to educate people to think about their place of privilege and how we can advocate for each other, particularly from a racial equity lens. For the board, we went to The Mountaintop this past weekend, which is, of course, Next Stop Theater's performance, which is about Martin Luther King Jr. It's still going on through Sunday. I strongly encourage everyone to, you know, get a ticket at the last minute here before that show closes. It was excellent. It's a great reminder, and although MLK Jr. was just one man among many men and women who have fought and continue to fight for racial equity and justice, certainly, he is a pivotal and charismatic and important person in that historical lens that the play does a great job of highlighting and mentioning, and highlighting and giving you more context of his, of his life. I'd also, there's a more, Bryan Stevenson, if you've heard his name. So, Bryan Stevenson wrote a book called Just Mercy. There's a, there's a movie out called Just Mercy. He is also someone that I think is really fighting, particularly with criminal justice, and how we make sure that our African-American citizens in particular are treated fairly in the criminal justice system. So, strongly encourage you to consider that as well. This is, this is something that certainly we want to acknowledge this as a proclamation, and also look at how we particularly, how white people, need to make ourselves better in this light and more open and more aware of the social injustice that our fellow brothers, sisters, and neighbors are faced with every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I echo everything that council members have said. Mr. Douglas, I truly appreciate what you said because it's very true. I think representative democracy is important, and we need to have those representations. I grew up in a, I've said it a couple times with a newspaper shop, and there was a gentleman who used to call in my parents' store Fred Ferguson, and he was a, an African-American gentleman and a very, an amazing guy, hard worker. And I remember when he had two hip replacements, he was using a walker to get back and forth to the store. And when the street in front of my parents' store for about seven months was torn up, and you couldn't park, you couldn't walk, it was like a minefield, Mr. Ferguson would park his car about a block and a half away, and he would use his walker to try and get to the store. And a couple times, I know that he actually fell. And one day, my, you know, he came in the store, and my dad said, you know, Freddie, what the heck are you doing? Why are you doing this? I mean, we were making $12 a day. It was awful. He said, Joe, your father hired the first African-American in our color plant, and that was my father. There's no way I can repay you. And the reason why I say that is because, number one, that was the first time I saw my dad cry. And the second is the fact that the actions that you do and the way you treat people have a profound effect generations from now. Being a good person and being right about something may not get you the accolades you deserve at that moment, but at that moment, I knew my grandfather was a good man. I never met him, but I know that my father was a good man, too. And it's important that we hold these things truth, and more importantly, to help each other out. And we need to be good to each other, and more importantly, make sure that African-American History Month becomes every day. Thank you.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
I, too, am very glad that we are honoring African-American History Month in Herndon. And I also appreciate the many contributions that residents of color have provided for the Town of Herndon. When I worked for the Council for the Arts of Herndon, one of the big murals we did was on the Dominion Animal Hospital. And one of my board members was Laverne Gill, Reverend Laverne Gill, and she did a history of the animal hospital, which was founded, I believe it was the first African-American-owned business in the town. It was owned by Doc Cochran, who was, I believe, a graduate of the Tuskegee Veterinarian School. And he started that business, and it's still going strong with, still has veterinarians from Tuskegee as, as the main employees there. And so, the, when you look at the mural and you see Doc Cochran's place painted on one of the barns, that was Laverne's, Reverend Gill's suggestion. There are, since then, have opened a number of other African-American-owned businesses, including Soliloquy Bridal Couture, which is one of the most beautiful bridal salons I have ever been in. And if, even if you're not getting married, I encourage you to go over there and meet the owners, Miriam and Tony Liggett. We also had a Vice Mayor who was African-American, Daryl Smith, who was a co, not just an African-American Vice Mayor, but also co-founded Vecinos Unidos and served as the Chief of Police of Percival, one of our neighboring towns. So, I'm sorry that this town has not always been a good place for people of color to live, and I think you can see by the expressions that we've made up here that we are eager and actively working on making sure that it never goes back to what it used to be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I concur with my council members. And just bringing it back to Herndon, I know when I have talked to Daryl Smith, or Smitty, as anyone who's been here over 25 years calls him, he was one of the first officers that I met in Herndon when I moved here almost 30 years ago. And my understanding is that he was our first African-American officer, and he lived here when it was very segregated. And he had told me many times, he was told, you better be on your side of the town before the sun goes down. And he has got to be one of the warmest, friendliest people I've ever met. He's got every reason to be bitter, but I've never found anything but just a real warm feeling and willing to help everyone. And then he ran for Town Council and became the first person of color, period, to ever be on our Town Council, I do believe. And then went on to Percival, but he still lives in town today. And I, too, went to see The Mountaintop. Excellent play, showing again that we've got awesome people in Herndon putting on really progressive plays. So, I hope that you will take the time to go out and see it. If not, maybe just read the book or check out some Martin Luther King PBS stories during the next couple of weeks. I'm sure during February, there will be a lot. So, we, the guests that we had invited are not here, the owners of Soliloquy.
Soliloquy.
Soliloquy. I do this every time. But they were unable to make it at the last minute, so we will just pass on the proclamation to, the presentation to them. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and say anything on our proclamation? No? Okay. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments to say?
No, I do not, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments from the Town Council? Mr. McKenna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in the same vein as Mr. Fielding stepping down, I want to congratulate Ms. Melissa Jonas, who stepped down last night as Chair of the Planning Commission, also from the commission altogether. She served with distinction for many years on that board. She is going to be working with the Fairfax County Housing Authority on matters of things like affordable housing and things of that nature. So, she'll be definitely someone we can, you know, work with in regards to what's going on in the county with her vast knowledge of real estate and understanding these things. It is a loss for Herndon, but certainly is a gain for the county. And I want to thank everyone for their well wishes, and I'm very proud of her, and I just, you know, it's, 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 it's a big loss, but we're, we're very excited for it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Friedrichs? Councilmember Frederick.
I just wanted to say, we have had a flood of resumes in our inboxes recently for new applicants to serve on the ARB, HPRB, and want to point out to anybody who's listening that every single person on the HPRB and ARB, with the exception of one, has to be a town resident. There are no non-residents except for someone with a professional historical architecture credential, which we were not able to find in the town. And I believe that's it. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Mr. Councilmember DeCall, excuse me.
I do not have any comments today. Thank you.
No comments for me.
Real quick, thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, I was lucky and surprised that I got a free invitation to the National Mayor's Conference in downtown DC. I was a guest at the dinner of the Latino Leadership Network. And I, again, totally surprised by the invitation, and it was a wonderful event, got to meet a lot of leaders. We got a shout-out downtown, by the way, Herndon, as, again, I wasn't representing in any official capacity, but they acknowledged us, they acknowledged me, and I just want to let the town know that people are aware of what's going on in Herndon. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations for being able to attend that. The 36th Annual Mayor's Volunteer Reception is coming up on April 19th, and this coincides with National Volunteer Week. And the tradition of volunteerism, as anyone who's been here very long knows, Herndon is, we have a very active group of volunteers in the town and in the surrounding area. And this is going to be a special evening, and it will be put on by the sponsor, by the town council, to graduate, to congratulate and extend our appreciation to all the volunteers who work so hard throughout the year to make Herndon the place it is. All these volunteers that put in hours of community service, you need to have about 100 hours at least to be recognized in this event. So just seeing the long list of people on this list every year just warms my heart to see how many people just really care about our town to do the various things, whether it's working with the scouts, like one of our visitors here, or the arts, or the boosters, the school boosters, they all make our community what it is. So think about, if you're in a group, make sure you get your nominations in. And you can get those nominations on our website, on the town's website. Are there any comments from the audience this evening? Ms. Knoll?
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, staff, Anne Veda, 631 Oak Street. No, we are not afraid of compliance with helpful, just, logical guidelines, but we oppose draconian dictatorial regulation. A couple of comments. One, the success of Herndon's recycling and trash updates after holidays and snowstorms is due to stakeholder involvement. Because so many are directly impacted, outreach has a multiplier effect. There are many flashing digital signs and many multiple Facebook postings for every update. On the other hand, the recent Heritage District letter appears drafted by a solitary non-stakeholder with a multiplier apathy effect. Tens of millions of dollars of real estate value are impacted by this rewrite, and they deserve at least as much stakeholder input as a couple of thousand dollars of recycling. Why don't we get some stakeholder involvement in the outreach? Two, the rewrite process appears to merge non-contributing new and reproduction structures with 173 contributing structures. This merger is a disservice to both. Three, I've heard some say that because 173 of us have been screwed so long and so hard that writing this wrong would somehow be unfair to the few who've been able to comply. But we all know, as we, the African American history recognition, among others, points out, we all know that two wrongs do not make a right, and perpetuating bad policy is, in fact, bad policy. For mandates, particularly unfunded mandates, result in financial burdens to those on whom they are imposed. But the town and consultant statements claim that these burdens increase property values. And not a single documented tourist has been attracted to our heritage designated homes. But town and consultant statements leave these lies to fester. Banding about a falsehood belies a frighteningly cavalier approach to heritage stakeholders' property rights. Those of us on the outside of the process, it appears that the rewrite is a sham for a preordained outcome, and that, yes, changes will be made to the color and the fonts of the guidelines, but the substance is already determined, and the will of the stakeholders be damned. Herndon is better than this, you all are better than this. Please apply the same transparency and rigor to the property rights of heritage stakeholders as you do to so many of your other pursuits. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Thank you, Ms. Gleikis.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Gleikis, 935 Barton Oaks Place. Doc Cochran over at the Dominion Vet certainly did leave a legacy, but the first African American resident to own his own business was Henry Sims in the 1880s, who owned a blacksmith shop on Eldon Street, kind of over near where Jiffy Lube is. But the reason I've come up to the microphone tonight is to give one more plug for the Good Neighbor Award, which is coming up soon, and nominations are due by January 31st. Just to remind everybody, this is where you get to nominate your neighbors, special neighbors, maybe unsung neighbors, who step up and do something selfless or outstanding for you or your neighborhood, someone who goes over and beyond the call of duty to make your neighborhood a great place to live. So in order to read more about this award and to access the nomination form, you can go on the town's website. Actually, it's very easy on the homepage. If you just click on latest news, you'll see, you know, in the drop-down menu there, there's something on the Good Neighbor Award. You can read about the award and get the nomination form. And again, they are due by January 31st. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers this evening?
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearings. And we now have 12 public hearings listed in the agenda that relate to the use of eminent domain for acquisition of easements for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to the Herndon Parkway. And I'll first ask staff to present the reports concurrently on all 12 public items, followed by separate roll-call votes on each of these. And I'm going to do my best to pronounce all the names right once I get through these.
Madam Vice Mayor, in addition to roll-call votes, separate public hearings, there will be separate public hearings.
Yeah, each one will be done separately, but we're going to have a concurrent presentation by the staff. So first, Ordinance 20-0-04 to authorize the use of the eminent domain for the acquisition of temporary and power utility easements on the property owned by James R. Lee, tax map number 0162220006, for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Next, Ordinance 20-0-05 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on property owned by Fergalo and Maria Vasquez, tax map number 0162220005, for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Ordinance 20-0-06 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on the property owned by Bargallo and Maria Vasquez, tax map number 0162-02-0151A, for public use by condemnation of transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Next, Ordinance 20-0-07 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a fee, simple interest, and a temporary easement on the property owned by Alvin J. and Elise El Cosmo, tax map, excuse me, 0162220019, for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Ordinance, next, Ordinance 20-0-08 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a free, simple interest, permanent and temporary easement on the property owned by Toan N. Najen, map number 0162220020, for public use by the condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Next, Ordinance 20-0-09 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of temporary, permanent, and power utility easements on the property owned by St. Timothy's Church Episcopal, map number 0162020153, for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. And Ordinance 20-0-10 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of temporary and power utility easements on property owned by Nicole and Patrick Lopez, tax map 0162-06-0002, for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Only five more to go. Ordinance 20-0-11 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a permanent easement on property owned by James Passmore and Aleah M. Bowen, map number 0162-06-0001, for public use by condemnation for public facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Next, Ordinance 20012 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on the property owned by Cleveland Woods Jr. and Sheila S. Woods, tax map number 0162-06-0016, for public use by the condemnation of, for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Ordinance 20-0-13 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on property owned by Bernice Miller and Stephanie Miller Crum, tax map number 0162-02-0141A, for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. And another one, Ordinance 20-014 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on property owned by Bernice Miller and Stephanie M. Crum, map number 0162-02-0141D, for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. And last, Ordinance 20-0-15 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on property owned by Parasad Al Ponati Santi Yarla Gandha, map number 0162-02-0312C, for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. And I will open the public hearings and recognize John Irish, the Deputy Director of Public Works, along with Laura Singler, Deputy Town Attorney, to give the staff reports on all 12 hearings concurrently.
Would you like some water?
Congratulations.
Needs more than water.
Thank you, Madam Chair and town council members. What I would like to do this evening is just give a brief overview of the project that is driving the need for what we were here this evening to put before you. And this is a familiar project for most, but for those that may not be familiar, project's called--
John, would you turn your microphone on, please?
We're moving closer to your, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
It was red. Just not close enough? Is that better? Okay. I'm sorry. To start back over again, the project is called Van Buren Complete Streets, and it is essentially improvements to Van Buren Street between Spring Street to the north and Herndon Parkway to the south. This was identified very early on in the planning for the area around the metro station to be a key link that needed to be improved for transportation of all modes. So as we call it, multimodal, bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicles. So this was then determined to be a project that would be significant in making the travel easier along that route. And along with the project, we are also having an improvement by traffic signalization at the Alabama Drive intersection. We are improving road drainage and stormwater management. And we have also utilized, to the extent possible, all the existing right-of-way. And as we go through this description here, what is actually involved with these takes in the process is really very small pieces of property that are required to give us the access to improve this road and not actually permanently taking a lot of properties, a total of 57 square feet in the whole scheme of things. The rest of it is for easements and temporary construction easements. The proposed improvements include 11-foot-wide travel lanes in both directions, there will be on-road bike lanes in each direction from Spring Street to Senate Court, and off-road cycle track section between Senate Court and the Haley Smith Park entrance. It'll include five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street, the new traffic signal Alabama Drive, and it also will include new lighting along those pedestrian ways as well. And the existing left-turn lanes will be maintained throughout that section of Van Buren. This is just a generic depiction of how the section of the road will be. It'll remain two lanes, one in each direction, with the cycle lanes on both sides, sidewalk on both sides, curb and gutter along the entire length, which is how we improve the drainage and stormwater management. This shows essentially a planned view of the improvements, starting at Herndon Parkway, traveling north. The gray shows basically where we will have the improvements for the sidewalk and the curb and gutter, continues up to the Alabama intersection on the left-hand side of this slide where the new light will be, includes crosswalks, pedestrian signals, ADA accessible ramps at all intersections, and continues up and ends at Spring Street. This shows the parcels that are involved with the hearing tonight, and the ones that are shaded in gray are the parcels that were just spelled out. And on this slide, the red is the only area that's actually right-of-way that we will be asking to personally take. The rest of the green and the blue are either temporary easements or permanent easements for relocation of utilities and things of that nature. Timeline for this project goes way back. It started around the end of 2011, went through several processes that included acquiring funding from federal agencies-- funding from federal agencies through Virginia Department of Transportation. There was also funding that came through the TAP, Transportation Funding. There was also funding that came from the HAM-SAMS, which was the Herndon Metro Rail Separate Fund that was authorized through Fairfax County. We've gone through the design process. We are now currently in the right-of-way process. Once we acquire right-of-way, then we will be in a position to commence the utility relocation with the intent of trying to go out for construction bidding sometime this spring, and it's starting construction sometime in the summer, fall, and if all goes well, completing by the end of the winter of 2020 to 2020, early 2021. And with that, if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to happily answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff, council members? Friedrichs.
So it looks like about 2% of the land that we're asking for permission to use is going to be fee-take. Is that land that we normally would-- Why are we taking it permanently as opposed to just an easement or borrowing?
If you notice on this slide where it shows the red area, that is necessary for the reason of putting the sidewalk and the right-of-way to coincide with what is on either side of those properties. For some reason, I can't give you an answer, those properties did not have established right-of-way as we have for the remainder of the project. So we need to give ourselves that space, and as I said, it's only about 57 square feet total, to allow us to improve, to make those same improvements contiguous all the way through.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, Lori Singler, Deputy Town Attorney, is here to describe the legal process briefly.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of town council. My name is Lori Singler, and I'm the Deputy Town Attorney. Just to give a little perspective of where we are today, there are 15 parcels that are in Phase II of the Van Buren Project. We have acquired signed deeds and conveyances from three of the property owners. It just so happens that those property owners did not have mortgage lenders or deeds of trust against the property, so their signature alone as a property owner was sufficient to convey what we needed. With the parcels that we have on the agenda tonight, the 12, they all do have mortgage lenders. And what we have found difficult is getting the deed and the easement through the mortgage companies for the proper approval and signature. There's one property owner in particular who started at the very beginning when they received their offer letter, and I'm still-- We may get that signature, but I'm still working with that property owner today to try to secure the signature and the approval. So if you recall, we're here in order for the town to condemn the project, and the use has to be a public use. And that is satisfied as this is a transportation project. We can't take any more private property than is needed for the project. And in order to do this, we do have to send a bona fide written offer to each property owner, which was done end of August, early September, for these property owners. And some of the reasons it's statute-driven in the Code of Virginia that we can file for condemnation is, one, that the locality can't agree on compensation or other terms of settlement; another one is that the owner is not able to convey valid legal title to the town, which, again, is the situation we've seen without mortgage lenders signing off. In order for a public body to condemn, there does have to be a public hearing, and that is the purpose of tonight's meeting. And we also have to send notice to the property owner notifying them of the town's intent to condemn. Those letters were all sent to the property owners with a letter dated January 9th of this year. So the earliest that the town could file a certificate is 30 days from the date of that letter, which is February 8th. The latest we could file a certificate is the 23rd of February. So again, the purpose tonight is to just get the authority from the council to file in case we cannot secure title to the properties by the deeds.
Thank you. Are there any questions of either of the staff? Councilmember Delaculon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to confirm, I didn't see-- I tried to notice, nothing changed from the work session presentation. Thank you. Regarding the bona fide offers, someone had asked me, is there a public or a process that can be shared with how those numbers and figures and offers were achieved? Is that a relatively simple, open thing to describe?
Well, some of them were specifically by appraisal. The town did have to hire an appraisal for several of the properties. Otherwise, what the town uses is the assessed value right from the real estate records, and we use that value determine, you know, based on the square footage of the parcel or the area that we need, and that we also-- We provide that calculation to all the property owners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedrichs.
Did you-- I asked you this in the work session, but I just wanted to reiterate for the people who are watching, did you have any pushback from any of the owners? Was there-- Because the language that we get implies that we are in an impasse because the owners don't want to allow these easements. Is that-- What is your response to that one?
An impasse is really a term of art that is used either in the state code, and an impasse simply means that the agreement could not be reached. Many times, the property owner, you know, expressed that they, you know, are happy with the offer, that they-- We've had even a party come in, sign the deed, knowing that the lender hadn't signed it, but they just wanted to show, you know, that we intend to convey the interest. So some of the languages you'll see in the staff report is of a technical nature. Again, the fact that we couldn't come to an agreement might not necessarily be overpriced, that it was oftentimes because we couldn't get the valid title conveyed without the lender's consent.
Thank you. Any other questions or clarification needed? No, I think you did an excellent job of going over this at the work session. I appreciate all your time, and I know you've spent a lot of time getting to all this. And I see some of the property owners in the audience, and I'm sure if anyone wants to talk to them about it, they can tell you about their adventure, getting the improvements along their property. So can we have comments from the audience on-- This is a public hearing, so we want to--
If we could state the number of the first one again.
So this is a public hearing, so I'm going to call on comments from the audience, and we're going to go in the order of the-- What's in your agenda? So we're at 20-0-04 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of temporary and power utility easements on the property of James R. Lee, tax map 0162220006 for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move on ordinance 20-0-04.
Second.
Okay, this will be a roll call motion, and it was-- The motion was made by Councilmember McKenna and seconded by Baker.
DeCall.
Oh, DeCall? I'm sorry. Okay. So with the clerk, call the roll.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Olum.
Yes.
You go at the end. Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olum.
Yes.
Okay. That passes, 6-0. And the second, this is a public hearing, I will call on comments from the audience on ordinance 20-0-05 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition-- Your-- Excuse me. Microphone, thank you. Imminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on property owned by Valgalio and Maria Vasquez, map number 016222005 for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I move to close the public hearing-- Or we'll move to close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move on ordinance 20-0-05.
Second.
Baker. That was a motion made by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Baker. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Point of privilege, Madam Chair, in regards to were there any comments from council before we take the roll call?
Discussion?
Yes.
That would be correct. If there is discuss-- Please call for discussion.
If there is discussion, yes. Excuse me.
Okay. There is no discussion, I just wanted to--
Thank you. Councilmember DeCall.
Just wanted to comment on this. I hope the landowners and also the lenders understand, this use of eminent domain is for a good cause, with the good intent to widen the road and, you know, have bike lanes, all those things which the community needs. So hopefully, they understand this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of council, discussion? Okay, ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olum.
Yes. That passes, 6-0. So we're on to the next item. This is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience on ordinance 20-0-06 to authorize the use of eminent domain for acquisition of a temporary easement by the property owners, the same, Valgalio, Vasquez, and Maria Vasquez, tax map number 0162-02-0151A for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of ordinance 20-0-06.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Delaculon and seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Are there any questions or discussion? None. All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olum.
Yes. Okay, that passes, 6-0. So now we're going to-- Ordinance, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to call on comments from the audience on ordinance 20-0-07 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a fee simple interest and a temporary easement on property, joined by Alvin J. Cosmo and Elise L. Cosmo, tax map 0162220019 for public use by the condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 20-0-07.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember Delaculon, and I'll ask the clerk to call the-- First, I'll ask if there are any questions or discussion on the matter.
No.
Okay, seeing none. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olum.
Yes. Okay, that passes, 6-0. So now we're at ordinance 20-08. This is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience on ordinance 20-0-08 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of fee simple interest, permanent, and temporary easements on property owned by Toan N. Najin, map number 0162220020 for public use by eminent domain for-- Use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience on this? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Chair, I move on ordinance 20-0-08 for passage.
Second.
Okay, motion by McKenna, seconded by Baker. Are there any questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, seeing none. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olum.
Yes. This is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience on ordinance 20-0-09 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of temporary, permanent, and power utility easements on the property owned by St. Timothy's Church Episcopal, map number 0162020153 for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion.
Madam Chair, I move approval of 20-0-09.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Is-- Are there any questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
None. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeAguila.
Yes.
Councilmember DeCall.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olum.
Yes. That passes, 6-0. So we are now at-- This is a public hearing, and we're going to call on comments for-- From the audience for ordinance 20-0-10 to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of temporary and power utility easements on the property owned by Nicole F. Lopes and Patrick T. Lopes, map 0162-06-0002 for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I move on ordinance 20-0-10 for passage.
Second. Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Baker. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olam.
Yes. That passes, six oh. And this is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience for ordinance twenty dash oh eleven to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a permanent easement on property owned by James Passmore and Ella M. Bowen, map number zero one six two zero six zero 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 one for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance twenty dash oh dash eleven.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olam.
Yes. Okay, we only have four more. For people in the audience or at home that want to run, take a break, we got four more. This is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience on ordinance zero, twenty zero twelve to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on the property owned by Cleveland Woods Jr. and Sheila S. Woods, map number zero one six two zero six zero zero one six for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments in the audience? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to council level.
Madam Chair, I move to approve ordinance twenty dash oh dash twelve.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion made by Councilmember DeKalb and seconded by Del Agula, DND. Is, are there any discussions on the motion?
No.
Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olam.
Yes. That passes, six oh. And now, this is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience for ordinance twenty dash oh dash thirteen to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on property owned by Bernice Miller and Stephanie M. Crum, Miller Crum, excuse me, tax map zero one six two dash oh two dash oh one four one A for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street to Herndon Parkway. Are there any comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Would you like us to bring the microphone to you, please?
You can't hear when you grab it with your mic.
It's been a matter of public record.
Ms. Crum?
Ms. Crum.
Ms. Crum?
We'll bring it to you.
We'll bring it to you. That's way easier.
Thank you.
Have it in stereo.
Okay. I called because I understand what they're talking about with my property. It's outside of my fence, it's only two feet. It isn't my property to start with because I've never maintained it, the town has, and I really don't understand what, and I've told them, I don't want any, I don't want any money, I have no objection to you using the property. It's been used all along, since I've been there, by the, all the people parking and fixing the lights and things like that. And the town gave me two lots when they straightened the road. That isn't on my mortgage. So I don't know who to go to get permission. I have no clue what to do. So I've said, I don't want any money, you can have the property, I don't want my fence taken down, I don't want my hedge taken down, you can't replace it if you take it down because the property, hedge is 25 years old, the fence is 50. So you tell me what you want me to do.
Can we have the staff contact?
Actually, I believe Ms. Sigler has been in contact, at least as of tonight, with Ms. Crum, and I, as I had said to her, she'd be happy to talk to her afterwards, there was just not enough time to complete the discussion. But I believe it's just a matter of going through the process. So Ms. Sigler'd be happy to speak with you outside.
Afterwards?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any other?
Any other questions or comments from the audience? That was Bernice Miller. Her daughter is Stephanie Miller Crum. Okay, seeing no other comments, and thanks staff for working with them, following this, taking care of their questions and concerns. And we're going to close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move on ordinance twenty dash zero dash thirteen.
Second.
Okay, that was, a motion was made by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Baker. Is there a discussion on the motion? Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Miller for coming out and for sitting through this to speak to us on that, and I know you're in good hands, we'll make sure that this gets clarified for you, but appreciate your comments tonight.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, thank you, and you know where I live, you can always come get me. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olam.
Yes. That passes, six oh. And we have one more for this, this couple of residents. This is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience for ordinance twenty dash oh dash fourteen to authorize the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of a temporary easement on the property owned by Bernice Miller and Stephanie Miller Crum, tax map zero one six two dash oh two dash oh one four one D for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street and the Herndon Parkway. Are there any other comments? Did you, you covered your concerns? Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Chair, I.
Please close the public, public hearing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we're closing the public hearing and moving to council level, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move approval of ordinance two zero oh dash fourteen.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion made by Councilmember Del Agula and seconded by Councilmember Baker. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olam.
Yes. And, this is the last one. This is a public hearing, and I will call on comments from the audience on ordinance twenty dash oh dash fifteen to authorize the use of eminent domain for acquisition of a temporary easement on property owned by Prasad Alpaneti and Santi Yarla Galda on property map zero one six two zero two zero three one two C for public use by condemnation for transportation facility improvements to Van Buren Street from Spring Street and Herndon Parkway. Are there any members of the audience that would like to make statements? Seeing none, I will move to close the public hearing and go to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Chair, I move on ordinance twenty dash oh dash one five for passage.
Second.
Okay. The motion was made by Councilmember McKenna and seconded by Councilmember DeKalb. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I have a discussion.
Yes.
Congratulations. You made it.
Thank you. Any other discussions?
I too congratulate.
Thank you.
As I said.
Seeing no other questions, I move to the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Del Agula.
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Olam.
Yes. And that passes, six zero. Okay. Thank you, that was long. We are now moving to the general items, and we have, the first, first item is Resolution twenty dash G dash oh one to accept the Planning Commission's finding and recommendations of the Planning Commission's five-year review of the comprehensive plan. For the record, this item was continued from the council's January fourteenth meeting, and I'd like to recognize Dana Heidberg for the Senior Planner for Staff Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good to run. So this is a resolution before you on the five-year review of the comprehensive plan, and the background is that the Virginia Code, of course, covers a lot of what we do in planning and zoning, almost everything, in fact, and we are carrying out the mandate of the code to review the comprehensive plan. And the Planning Commission, the local Planning Commission shall determine whether it's advisable to amend the plan. The Town of Herndon Comprehensive Plan, as you know, was adopted in August of 2008. There have been seven significant amendments since that time in the intervening years, and those include three area plans that were adopted by council. And so the intent of the five-year review is to determine whether it's advisable to amend the plan. We're looking to establish general guidance for updates or amendments and provide staff with an outline of priorities and provide staff with concerns and interests to guide and inform future amendments. As you know, we had a pretty extensive public outreach process during about the past eight or nine months, and listed here are some of the highlights, I won't cover all of that, but these were some of the highlight meetings, there were several other venues and public hearings and opportunities for input as well. So the status, at this time, the, as you know, the Planning Commission passed a resolution December sixteenth, 2019, determining the status of the plan and providing staff guidance for potential future amendments. And so you have before you a council resolution dated January twenty-eighth, which will, if you approve it, will accept and affirm the commission's findings, and it also incorporates the town council's policy directives as discussed during recent work sessions. We had quite a number of points, about a dozen, that were brought forth by the council, and we've worked with you to capture those, and I believe that was affirmed at the last work session, and, and so the staff recommendation at this time is to approve Resolution twenty G oh one dated January twenty eighth, 2020. And that concludes the staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions by council? No questions? Okay. So if there are no questions, I'll move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Chair, or Chair, excuse me, I move on Resolution twenty dash G dash zero one for passage.
Second.
Okay, that was, the motion was made by Councilmember McKenna and seconded by Councilmember Del Agula. Is, are there any questions, discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to first thank staff for their diligence. We continued this because there was some input from council in regards to some of the language that was incorporated, so definitely want to thank you for the quick turnaround on that. Also want to thank the Planning Commission and all the boards that were associated with this, and I truly enjoy these kinds of things because these are what I call game plan for greatnesses, moving forward to, with what we're supposed to be doing. And I would love to see, I mean, we had a joint work session with Planning Commission, I would love to have more, not just with Planning Commission, but other boards as well, so we can integrate what we're doing, because Virginia's unique in the way that Planning Commission brings their stuff up to council and then gets voted on versus a state like Homero or New Jersey, where the Planning Commission actually, once they vote on something, it's done. So I do think that would help with alignment, and that'd be something for the future, but for right now, this is fantastic, great job to everybody, thank you.
Comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the public for their comments, for taking time and really giving us some thoughtful feedback and insight in what's expected as a desired outcome. I'll just remind people that it's budget season and these things aren't free, so help us, guide us on what you feel these priorities might be as we prioritize budget allocation. Thank you.
I join my colleagues in thanking the staff. I put in a number of these language changes, including the adaptive area and some other words, wording having to do with our small businesses, and I know it's an ongoing project, but I really deeply appreciate everything you all did, thanks.
So I, I too think staff, plans in a town take a very long time to be accomplished, and thanks for their thorough planning. Some of the things that I've been seeing since I moved to town have been happening the last six, eight years. We were able to not only plan, but go out and get funded, so that our taxpayers are not putting the whole bill, which is always awesome. So with that, I'll call the questions. All in favor?
No other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, six oh. Now we have Resolution twenty G dash oh three to provide the town manager with town council guidance.
Need to press your mic, Acting Chair.
Thank you. Resolution twenty G dash oh three to provide the town manager with town council guidance for the FY 2021 budget, and I'd like to recognize our town manager, Bill Ashton.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Tonight's a very important part of the budget process, which actually begins in the fall and works its way to culmination sometime later this spring. This is where you all give to staff some guidance on what you'd like to see incorporated in as we go about preparing to present to you a proposed budget, what the priorities of the council are, what I need to consider and staff needs to consider as we look at a myriad of options, as we pare them down into the budget we present each year. We started this process of budget guidance back in the fall, where we gave you a couple budget discussion items at work sessions, where we discussed some of the challenges we were seeing, some of the trends we were seeing, some of the things that we needed to keep our eye on. We then had a discussion back at the beginning of the month at a work session to get from you some, some ideas as to what you want to see in the resolution, and that's what you have before you tonight. Some of the major themes in this, as we've been talking for months, there's, we're seeing a disturbing trend with the creep of costs of labor, with the cost of materials, especially circulating around construction projects, we're starting to see some issues in funding for transportation projects, and so one of the first bullets we wanted to make sure was. And so, one of the first bullets we wanted to make sure was recognized here, based in our conversations, which you've told me, what we've talked about, is to continue to address those impacts, look for ways to address the impacts so we get these very important transportation projects completed. You're very interested in downtown, advancing the downtown redevelopment. The art center element to the downtown redevelopment is very at the fore of your mind and also included here. Sustainability plan and technology were two other areas that you wanted us as a staff to continue to focus on. Technology offerings that will make it easier for our citizens to interact with staff to get the needed work of government done, ways to find ways to be more efficient and effective in the provision of those services are also at the fore of your mind and included in this resolution you see before you tonight. You also realize that 70% of our operating budget is staff. It's employee salaries, benefits, and overtime and things like that. It is not unusual for a service-based organization to have that heavy level of staff in, on their budget. But you recognize that and you wanted us to make sure that we were staying competitive in the employment market because it is a virtual zero unemployment environment in Northern Virginia. We have some critical areas in the town where, over the course of the last year or two, we've experienced problems recruiting. And we've addressed that over the times. Things like CDLs, commercial drivers licenses, the gentlemen and ladies who drive the trash trucks, the push the snow, those are very important to us. We were having some problems there and we've made moves to address it. Same thing with law enforcement officers, especially ones that came, come in with the Virginia certification. You wanted us to continue to do things to keep competitive in that place. You also realize that this year, we're going to see the biannual actuarial analysis of our retirement system. We are anticipating a retirement increase coming out of the state this year. We are also anticipating a healthcare increase coming out of our healthcare providers, or healthcare insurance companies this year as well. And you wanted to make sure we were addressing that. Skills development, education, these are critical things to not only taking our employees to become better at what they do, to provide better service, but it also is intrinsic to morale of the troops, to make sure that they're getting trained and their skills aren't falling by the wayside. You show in this resolution a commitment to that as well. Other things, we've worked very hard to have a very strong fiscal position. And you want us to continue to work towards maintaining and bolstering that fiscal position. That includes things like addressing rising costs associated with the service delivery outside of personnel, continue to develop a multi-year revenue and expenditure models like we've done in the fall where we did a three-year projection, looking at ways to make those projections more elastic for different potential economic environments, as well as stretch them out perhaps even to five years, so we can get a better understanding of where we're going. You wanted me to take a look, continue our efforts in lifecycle maintenance, getting that out of capital and getting it into the cost of doing business. And we're going to make strides, we're hopefully going to continue there. One of the major issues coming up is balancing the water and sewer revenue with operating costs. Because the rates have not been raised, to keep pace with the commodity charges, we were being charged for the commodity of water and sewer. We have some structural issues there that we have been addressing. You want me to continue to address that in this resolution before you. And we have water and sewer infrastructure issues that come up with any system that has pipes in the ground for as long as we've had pipes in the ground. And you want us to make sure we have a proactive program to address those things as well. And that is also included in the resolution you have before us. So, I thank you for your candid input to staff over the course of the last several months that led us to this. Hopefully, we'll be able to meet these demands as we go through the budget process. We're engaged in it right now. And with that, I will entertain any questions you all might have.
Are there any questions of the town manager on the budget? Comments? Friedrichs?
I just wanted to thank you so much for taking planning so seriously to heart because I think that's the key to making sure that we have fewer and fewer surprises as time goes by. I know we're always going to have some surprises, the cost of labor going up so significantly, the decrease in availability of new staff, the difficulty in recruiting, that is. And for, God knows why, the cost of recycling going sky-high. These are all things that we can try and plan ahead for, but we're never going to be able to find everything. So, I deeply appreciate the focus on planning ahead. Thank you.
Point of privilege, Madam Vice. I believe a motion and a second has to happen before comments.
Right. Thank you. That was my next. We need to move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Chair, I move for passage of 20-G-03.
Thank you. That was a motion made by Councilmember McKenna and seconded by Councilmember Friedrichs. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes. All those things I said before.
Yes, okay. All those things she said before. Thank you.
I just want to thank staff for preparing us for what's ahead. This is a difficult part of our job, but one that's absolutely necessary. And I look forward to working with everybody in regards to this. And as Mr. DiAgula said earlier, your input in the ether out there through the internet and also on TV is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes. So, thank you to our town manager, to the department heads, certainly for the Department of Finance, for all their work on this initial part of the process and as we continue, because it's going to be a busy couple of months, looking at the budget season as we talked about. Thank you for aligning to the vision that the council has laid out over the past few years and continue to refine and move forward in that direction of the vision with constant input, both from current council members and the public. So, thank you for continuing to give us that feedback. I appreciate that you highlighted personnel costs, right? That is, the bulk of our budget is our personnel. It's our Department of Public Works, it's our police officers, it's all those people in our, in staff that really provide the services that we all love and appreciate and value. And those services are worth paying for, right? So, making sure that we keep morale up, making sure that we don't lose good employees to Fairfax County or Arlington County or Loudoun County. It's a competitive market, right, where we are. So, we do have to be really conscious of that and we want to make sure we're keeping those employees. So, thank you for acknowledging and recognizing that personnel costs, we need to just always be on that and keep competitive. Employee churn is certainly expensive as well, so employee retention is an important piece. And certainly, having gaps in our employees, like I know we have some of those today. And that, of course, has an impact on our safety, security, on our, whether our trash gets picked up on time. So, all those things matter. So, thank you for highlighting that. And just for your continued leadership of you and the department heads and really giving them the autonomy, the flexibility, the, just setting the expectations of, to be forward-thinking, to really focus on how can we make improvements? How can we be really cost-effective while still providing the valuable services that our citizens and businesses come to expect? So, appreciate the guidance, what's been laid out so far. And again, we've got a lot to do in the next couple of months. And as all of us have sat up here, please continue to give us your input on the budget over the next several weeks and months. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember DeKalb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Bill, and the rest of the staff for this document. I would call it a high-level vision document for the Budget 2020. Thank you so much for bringing it. And as the time comes, you know, we'll work on the granular level to make sure the priorities are set right. But having said that, I just wanted to talk about one thing. Maybe it could be, you know, one line item in the budget, or maybe we don't have to. But in our town, I wanted to see more effort in helping the small business owners. When I say small business owners, does not always mean just the business owners, but the people who want to be a business owner. Because a lot of people may have some ideas, they want to start their own home-based business, could be anything, could be food business, could be, you know, simple daycare business or any business they want to start from their home. But they may not be aware of all these procedures, you know, all the licensing procedures and what they have to do from county and what they need from the town. And I have seen a lot of people being very confused. And with that confusion, even if they have a great idea, they may not be able to, you know, translate that idea into real business. And for that, I went and talked to our economic, you know, advisor committee as well. I went and joined some of the meetings of Dallas Chamber of Commerce. I even went and attended a few trainings offered by Fairfax County Economic Development Authority. And I liked the training they provide over there. So, I wanted to see if we can bring them here at least once or twice a year to educate people on these, you know, how to open business, how to open, you know, small businesses, household businesses, so that they can actually, on top of their other job or business, whatever they have, they can increase their income. Because I believe if we can give them access or information to increase the income, obviously, that ultimately helps the town with the budget as well, I mean, with the tax as well. So, it may not require a lot of funds to be allocated to hold these seminars, but I would love to see that. Because I went and joined one of their training, it was called Entrepreneurship 101. And they had people from Small Business Administration, SBA, they were teaching people how to start minority-based owned business, women-owned business, what are the procedures? And there were people from the county telling them, you know, what they need to do, what are the license they need to open certain kind of business. And also, our town people can also, our town staff can also help people with the licensing procedure and everything. We may not be able to cover everything, but what we can do is we can actually provide people access, the information, who to talk to, who to call, or, you know, where to look for information. I think that direction, that simple direction will help our residents to maybe go ahead and start one business, you know, they wanted to start, but, you know, because they were unaware of the directions and the requirements. And people may be doing business, but they may not be doing business in the right way. They may not have applied for the license because they may not know about these things. So, this will be a great information sharing, but also motivating people, inspiring people to go and accomplish whatever, you know, small business dream they have. I think being the town, I think we can do that for our residents. And this will benefit the residents and ultimately benefits the town. So, I would love to see that in 2020 if we can.
Are there any other comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Definitely want to echo the comments, appreciate staff and the public comments. But I want to go on the record to actually thank the council. I think unlike some of the predecessors of this council, I sense a commitment to assessing, evaluating, and investing in the things that I think are paramount to our long-term success. We are expanding. We're growing. We're getting more dense. And I think there's a majority plus one on this council to make sure the investments are prudent, they're well thought out. And I just want to give a shout-out to my colleagues that are understanding that these things cost money, they take time, but they require investment. And just wanted to let the public know, remind them that we all live in the town as well. So, we feel the pain. So, thank you.
Any other comments? I'd just like to say I'll look forward to working on this budget. I know we've got a lot of challenges and I thank the town manager and staff for bringing those to us, especially things like water. I mean, I don't think anyone in town wants to do without water. And I hope the citizens will be involved in communicating with us. We do have a roundtable coming up. See, is that the 29th of February? We'll be having another roundtable here in the HMC on Saturday morning. Please look for that information. If you don't like to come to council meetings, you could come talk to us then, or you could grab us in the grocery store, contact us, we've all got our emails online. Please get out and make your voices heard. I know, I like the services in the town. And if you tell me we're going to have to cut the budget or raise taxes, there's nothing that I can think of that I'm going to want to cut. I don't want the snow not to be removed. I don't want them not to pick up my leaves. The trash, I love them picking up my trash. And I want to keep those things going. I've been here and have grown to appreciate them. And if I move just right outside the town of Herndon, I would lose so many benefits that I think it's worth staying here. So, thank you very much. And with that, I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No. Yes, no. I didn't say no. All, so that's 6-0. It's been a long meeting. That passes. So, now we have Resolution 20-G-04 to award a contract of the IFB 20-6 Facility of Marketing of recyclable materials and Cindy Roder. Why is that in my? They've got Cindy Roder right here. And I kept thinking, why is Cindy doing this?
This would be Tammy Chastain, our Deputy Director of Public Works. Thank you.
All right. Good evening.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm Tammy Chastain, the Deputy Director of Public Works. I'm just going to talk to you about recycling. Specifically, this is for our contract, but I wanted to kind of bring your attention the recycling process, some changes we've seen, because prices are increasing as the commodity rates are kind of decreasing. So, I wanted to kind of cover recycling process, essentially, citizens put in, put the acceptable material into the containers. We collect it, we take it to the material recovery facility. And that is what this contract is going to be awarding, is a new material recovery facility for us to take our material to where they sort it. And then, they sell it at whatever rate they can sell it for and provide us a rebate to the tipping fee. As you know, there've been some challenges with recycling more recently. These are some of the challenges that we have seen. And, sorry. But anyway, sorry, I lost my track. So, these are some of the challenges we're seeing with recycling. There are a limited number of MRFs in the region. It's, is heavily reliant on what is put into the recycling stream. The more contamination, the less they actually can get good recyclable material out of it. One thing to note, we are, we do keep our, we have kept our recycling rate above 25%, which is our requirement. And we've made one change in the recent past to add the purple container for glass recycling or reuse. I wanted to kind of show you the recycling rebate over time. As you can see, in 2017, we actually would get rebate money back from the recycling MRF. And as you can see, over time, we are now paying monthly, but this is just a quarterly show of what we're paying for recycling because those commodity rates have, in many cases, dropped to zero for how much they're getting for the material, $0. So, the recycling contract, we sent it out, had one contractor bid, and they are, they were found responsive and responsible. This is Republic. They, this is a very similar contract to what we had before. We did add in a six-month notice for us to, if they need to change anything that's in the recycling stream, to allow us to communicate that and an opportunity to find an alternate solution if possible. With this contract, we do see an estimated increase of about $50,000 to our recycling budget. And most of that is the tonnage cost and the commodity cost. So, essentially, in summary, we need, we need an MRF, MRF, excuse me. And they are a responsive, responsible, willing to keep the similar products that we're providing them now. And we are looking and continuing to communicate with NVRC, NV, I'm sorry, Northern Virginia, Northern Virginia Regional Commission and the Northern Virginia Waste Management Board and talking with them on how things are changing throughout Northern Virginia because this isn't just an issue for Herndon. isn't just a, an issue for, for Herndon. So, and we're also looking at possible changes to the solid waste ordinance as well. So, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Are there any questions by council?
Yes, Ms. Friedrichs.
Councilmember Friedrichs.
So you're saying we only had one company bid for our recycling?
Yes.
Is that normal for us?
Not normal, but a few others inquired and essentially wanted us to remove more things that were acceptable material, so.
So they provide the most different kinds of materials collected?
Yes.
And the six-month notification, we didn't have that with the former?
No.
Company?
No.
And that's to take care of the problem that we had with the glass recycling?
That's the intent, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, questions or comments?
I've got one. The fact that we're no longer able to do glass, but the citizens can take it to the public purple bin, are we going to see how that's affecting our trash fees as we're moving along with the budget? Because glass is so heavy, I know that that's going to make a big impact.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, because I, I think this, maybe this will be a way to rally people to take their glass to the, I know it takes a little time to take it over there, you have to put them in one at a time so we don't get rats, but thank you very much.
Sure.
We can have discussion and a motion?
Madam Chair, I move on Resolution 20G-04.
Moved by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Baker. Do we have discussion on the motion? Yes.
Just again, want to thank staff for their diligence, and obviously, having a broader array of things being collected, I think, is something that, you know, again, is, is very Herdennesque, if you will, in regards to making sure services are provided for our citizenry. And to the chairwoman, great question regards to glass, because again, we're dealing with, I mean, every ounce counts, literally, because, you know, that's, that could add up to points on the, on the budget. So, well done with that, and thank you, staff, for, for your diligence on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yeah, this is a hot topic in town. I mean, I'm hearing a lot about recycling. When I take a walk in the morning, I run into neighbors, they want to talk about recycling. When I was out on Saturday night, people want to talk about recycling. Like, it is a really hot topic. And I think a key thing I'm seeing, and Ms. Chastain highlighted this to some extent, and so did Chair Olum, is just education, right? I think folks just don't realize the impact this has when they, when we have contaminated recycling, where they're putting stuff in that shouldn't be in there. You know, and even though the glass, the purple bins are being really well utilized, you know, potentially, it's not, there's still going to be lots more glass, of course, in the trash than there has been in the past. So, so much more we can do, I think, on education, because it really has highlighted, I think, citizens aren't aware, even the macro level, of what's happening with recycling globally, and then how it's, of course, impacting our 4.2 square miles. So I think some more we can, we can think about even during budget season, because this is obviously going to continue to be something we have to work on and improve. And, because our residents do care, are concerned, and do want to make this right and, and do as best they can with this. So thank you for highlighting that for us.
Any other comments, discussion?
Yeah, I will say the majority of comments I get from the fact that they want us to have a new truck with DPW that only picks up glass, and I keep saying, how much are you willing to pay for that service? Because it will cost. And people don't like the fact that you have to put the glass in individually, but then Fairfax County doesn't want to pick up something that's full of rats and raccoons. So they have to make it harder for the critters to get in. So with that, I'll call the question. All approve?
Aye. Aye.
Any ayes? That passes six oh. And that brings us to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of, of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second that.
Okay. Move approval by Councilmember Baker, seconded by McKenna. Call, is there any discussion on any of these items? Call the question. All approve?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. Okay. This concludes the agenda for the evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, seeing no further business, I move we adjourn.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion adjourned by Councilmember Baker, seconded by McKenna.
Call the question?
Call the question?
All those in favor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Six oh.
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned. Let's motor.